...to the flag of the United States of America and to the real public religious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, everyone.
All the way to order? The motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
amended the-
amended agenda.
Second.
What I got here?
No, well, that's earlier in the week, I guess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Prove the minutes.
Well, it looks like, uh, we had a pretty good meeting two weeks ago. Appears like it was in order. Got everything done, so I'm making motion to approve minutes from seven, eight, nineteen.
And special, uh, favor?
Aye.
Both carried. General public concern.
Do you want to bring that up now, or did you get it? Okay.
It's not on the agenda, so you can get it right now.
Okay. I want to make sure the board supervisors are aware, right now there's a lot of, uh, disinform- I'm gonna straight up call it disinformation out there on social media right now about the animal shelter. Almost all of it directed at me personally, some directed at Dave as well. Um, Rick, I don't know if you got pulled into it or not.
I, uh, I am not on Facebook, so I don't know.
Right. But, uh-
We don't want to know.
No.
Yeah, no. It's- Facebook is the destroyer of our community, quite frankly. So, just want to make sure that this county board supervisor is aware that of disinformation out there. That board is meeting tonight to discuss, uh, the information. I will say, uh, it's- it's all being perpetuated by our animal control officer and her family, and so I don't know what their motives are, whether they think it'll advance the cause of the shelter or not, but, uh, I've been, huh, to the- I gotta be careful how I word this, now that Kent's here. But I've even called the- been called the county supervisor. I've- that's a-
That's a bad-
Yeah. I'm a slam, yeah.
That is a slam, right?
Uh, I've been- it was thought that I was elected official as well. I- according to Facebook, I've been in trouble for disseminating public information in the past, and I'm doing it again, and so it's- I've already had conversations with an attorney as well. Uh, I just want to bring this to your guys' attention, because I know I'm gonna bring it to my council's attention to consider, uh, consideration the contract with the ACL.
But just so we know where we're at, it- every time we get more people involved, another group, they have different ideas, so all of the things take time to try to get, uh, I'm- I'm not putting words in committees, but it all seems like you get something somewhat situated, and then the next time you turn around, you find someone else that had a different idea. You have to think them all through, because as long as you build it, it's built.
Right. And ironically enough, that group was set to meet this week, which I voluntarily serve on that board, as well as Dave and Rick. Uh, ironically enough, that group was set to meet this week, which was reported at the meeting last week, where, uh, it was just board members present, and so group- enough last week, we had another round of discussions with Jim Groenbeck, who's gonna be the contractor on it. Had a site plan basically drawn up, we made some minor tweaks, and we were set to vote this week on building, fi- yeah, building, financing package. I mean, basically, greenlighting projects, and to be quite honest with you, I don't know that it's gonna move forward at this point. I really don't. That group's gonna meet tonight to discuss further, but as a voluntary member of the board, I'm a- I- I don't know, I'm gonna continue to participate. You only dragged me through the mud twice before I- the second round of it.
Yeah.
Social media is an evil place.
Correct.
People don't have their facts.
Correct.
That was never an animal shelter. Purpose of it was the holding place or shelter for our dogs and cats that we picked up through the county and the city, and the other entities that joined in with us. And that's the only payday that Mary gets for picking them up. Well, she's taken them in from all over the county. Somebody drops off a cat, somebody drops off a dog, and she's taken everything in. That wasn't the purpose of us trying to get this shelter or holding facility built, was to house the ones that we kept, uh, cat or captured, and have a place for them to keep them. We gracious enough to rent a place for her to use, and now she's complaining it's too small, the dogs get to the cats, and blah, 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 and it went on and on and on, and then everybody else jumped on the baby wagon and all that. But that's just a kind of new place, a holding shelter. It's not a public shelter.
Correct. When we started this, so Mary talks about three years ago in the article, and I said six months. I was a little off. Eight months ago.
Eight months.
Eight months ago is when the group was formed, according to the Secretary of State page, when everything was filed. But three years ago is when we engaged in the contract with Mary for animal control. Animal control, as Dave said. That was to pick up the animals associated with calls to the LEC, not with this shelter portion. So the shelter portion, which, as I said, I said voluntarily, I am not appointed from the city to sit on that board for a city purpose. That is supposed to be a completely separate issue, but we- we can't seem to- I mean, a year ago, we were in this situation over the Dakota City issue. Same problem. Eight- the animal control and the animal shelter kept getting blended. It's still not fixed.
I just wanna appreciate your comments. Well, what, Dave, it was a facility for holding animals. The county, the city, never set out to build an animal shelter. Set out to build a new holding facility. And why this is such a convoluted mess, I'll temper my comments, but I got a pretty sneaking suspicion, like everybody does.
Well, I see the frustration, because evidently there was a cat loose in there or something, they got too close to the cat kennel, and no, no one laid or something out of it, but it was, never seen it. But that upset her, and she went to Facebook, and it took off from there, and I won't say what some of them called Travis and myself, but I got tired of it.
Yeah. Board supervisor member was the lightest of them.
Yeah. Travis really got very political.
There's no reason or need for this.
Right.
It's blown out of proportion. Like I said, I just wanna say again, Dave, tip of the nail, that it's set out to create a facility to hold animals, period. And there's some people, obviously in the social media arena, that have taken it and run amok.
Right.
The other side is, even if you do greenlight it in the next day or to the next month, it isn't like they have three truckloads of lumber sitting outside of town waiting to start plugging stuff up. It is- it takes time to do it.
Jim's busy enough, it's not like he's just waiting. I love Jim, but I have a contract with him too for- for my own stuff, so-
Right.
Absolutely. It's gonna take time. We've been waiting on a rip up in both for a year.
He's been the guy.
Let's beat up on Jim then.
They did try that on Facebook.
I know. I'm just saying, we can't- can't make it work overnight.
We need to get anything accomplished.
Right, right.
But I don't care what it is. In this case, Travis came to-
And that's why I have not engaged whatsoever on social media. Why is it that you guys are aware that Kent's aware of the variety of rate? I think Kent is aware.
I mean-
I wonder how to be.
Yeah, 'cause that was the county's part was, dogs call in to the LEC. The dispatch lets her know, she goes picks them up, so our deputies weren't out picking them up.
Oh, chasing dogs.
Out picking up dogs.
Or cats.
And it's just gotten out of control for their-
There's a problem with social media and Facebook. Everybody, nobody sees you. They're not talking face to face. Everybody thinks they can just say whatever and whatever, and it doesn't, you know, it's just out there. Doesn't matter what you think, you don't have to be polite, you can be rude, you can be mean, and it's just bullying.
And what's most ironic about that statement, Sandy, is there are- my wife was absolutely furious and devastated, because there were some of the comments on there that were from people that they must not put two and two together. There's not a lot of good kids around town.
Yeah.
And, you know, my wife has given her cell phone number out to people to say, "Hey, I work from home, if you need me to pick up your kid that's in our son's class, give me a call, and we'll go pick him." We can't- he can stay at our house until then. And then so they chime in on Facebook, all kinds of nasty stuff, that they haven't even met me. And they share- they have a cell phone number out with my wife to pick up their kid.
Oh, my gosh.
Unreal.
Who doesn't get a call for it?
Yeah.
We've worked, we've designed the thing, we've had the vets involved in designing it. Dr. Aubrey's husband was nice enough to write a laptop, and as we said, won't we want it? He put it on paper, and he wrote it on the screen, and added this, took away this, and he's gotta have to program it. We worked stuff around in the building, designed it. We haven't ready to meet tonight, and approve it, but I started building, and I saw, with you guys' permission, I'd like to put this paper I viewed this morning in the copy that Kent did, a new letter to the editor. Can you do that, Kent?
Sure. Yeah, I read through it, I think you did a nice job there.
Yeah, very good.
Just my feelings on some of the facts.
Yeah.
He just handed a couple out.
Okay, anything else?
Well, Travis, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep, you know, it's, uh, as much as I keep saying it's part of the job, it's still a tough part of the job.
Great guy.
Anyway.
It's just some people that don't get all the- both sides destroyed, all the back where they start getting bad.
Right.
A lot of them, and everybody's-
Correct. It's really- it really wasn't. Like I said, the city didn't tell me I had to do this.
I know.
You know, I try and serve up like building trades. It's a program through the school, well, if you guys are aware of it, I serve on that board because it's a benefit to the community, so it's kind of part of my job to make sure I do everything for this community. That's why I served on this board. But at a certain point, done.
We appreciate what you do.
Dust both there, Larry.
Pardon me?
Dust both there, Larry.
We appreciate it, and hanging there.
Yep, yep.
Maybe we did some of that stuff straightened out, get it killed before the whole building goes by the wayside.
Right. You're really not thinking that, are you?
That's what a lot of them are thinking. You've got a committee out there of several entities, and I've talked to quite a few of them, and they're thinking, just throw their hands up, to hell with it.
Quite frankly-
If you're ready to finalize something, somebody's gotta do shit like this, mark my fridge, and it takes off from there, and we're dead.
Quite frankly, Larry, everyone's concerned that you're the next target.
Yeah. But to be malicious, and when you're malicious, there's no cause to be malicious. Let's be polite citizens for crying out loud. But all you gotta do is talk, you know, reasonably. You don't have to go to social media, they could've called the city hall, whatever, you know, talk to them, and gone, whatever, gone that route.
Is it, without being, you know, finger pointing, is there a specific person that's causing the problem?
Yes, without- Yeah, I haven't seen any of this on Facebook.
Is it Mary?
I don't know.
Well, once they put their two cents worth in on the Facebook, just the one that started it, and it just got out of hand, and like I say, Travis was on there, he got wrecked through the cold, the mud, and everything else. I got wrecked over a little bit, not bad, but, uh, you know, maybe stop the crap, get both sides of it. Don't just start something, and then got hit the bags.
Well, and it's ironic that, I mean, the phrase is, don't fight the hand that feeds you. And the county supervisors has been paying rent on that facility this whole time, and-
Pay your money.
We talked about-
And the dogs, and-
Right, the whole financing portion was maybe was for the city and the county to take portions of our animal control budget, do it as a donation to them to house our- our animals. Well, that was a, you know, what the plan was, was to be an ongoing contribution from the city and county to fund the- the building, and then you put this stuff out there that completely, like, blatant attacks. How do you expect those individuals to move forward with it?
Yeah. Well, the county got stuck with a twenty-three hundred dollar dog vet bill here a month ago. And the month before that, it was eleven hundred.
Yeah.
So that's gotta stop. County ain't got money, citizens don't have the money to put that into animals. I like animals, don't get them wrong. I've got dogs, I've got horses, I- I enjoy my pets, but this has gotta stop. I mean, I'm not gonna throw out any more of the county money. They pay for their animals and stuff. If we're gonna get dragged through the money, that's what we do.
Right. If the only thing, uh, I was reading to your, Eric, when you mentioned this is gonna be a non-kill temporary shelter.
It's not a not a no kill.
It's not a no kill. Not-
It's not a non-kill. We'll find homes, which is what they're supposed to do, find homes.
But if the animal is beyond- beyond saving-
Correct.
They will be euthanized, or if it's overcrowded, they will euthanize. That is in our bylaws.
The holding facility.
Correct.
Not an animal. Facility, it's not a shelter.
Yeah.
It's not a non-kill. It's not a shelter. It's gonna be like normal homes or something else.
Or you have to go through twenty pages of an adoption, and home screenings, and-
Yep.
People can't even get animals out of there, hardly.
I'll be going ahead.
Thanks, Travis.
I just, like I said, I just wanted, didn't want to pity party, just want to make sure you guys are aware that all that information out there, almost every drop of it is wholesale.
Yeah.
I think we could've finished.
So, I told Kent, there's probably gonna be another letter to the editor on that board.
What time is it, me and you?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
It used to be around six, or seven.
We've worked it, we've been sitting here all night, that's not what happened.
First.
I got how many students there are.
Sure we might-
Yeah, that number's gonna be pretty low.
I bet- bet the board just got a lot smaller.
Yep.
Uh-huh. All right.
How you doing?
Thanks for having us.
All right, have a good day.
Yep.
Did you hear how many people forgot papers for-
Oh, man.
Check Peggy afterwards.
You're in.
Morning.
That's you?
Morning.
They all so full of you.
Kind of the worst of the day, right?
Yeah.
Got a few things on the agenda today. Uh, the first item up is to approve, uh, quote for a new pickup for the Dakota City shop. We had this on last year's budget, and with paving and everything going on, I did not get that done before, uh, the end of the fiscal year. But, uh, we got quotes from both local suppliers. Uh, I think I included that for you guys. As you can see, uh, Humboldt Motors was significantly cheaper, um, for a new twenty-twenty Chevy Silverado, twenty-five hundred HD.
Very good.
They've given us a very good- between the- the trade-in and, uh, the incentives that they have available. No kidding, right? About the same thing. Come with the- something with the state purchase program? Yeah.
So that's just-
That's why the price-
And- and I need to- I need to talk to Preston, 'cause I don't think he, the reason that the cost difference is so high-
Oh, you think he didn't realize?
I don't think he realized that we were covered by state net pricing, buying equipment.
Usually they're a lot-
Usually it's a lot closer, yeah. And- and Preston had said, I guess, when he dropped his off, that he didn't know if he did his-
Correct.
Correctly. But that was his quote.
So, are you wanting to hold off on this, or you-
No, I'm- I'm ready to move forward with this one. I'll, uh, I'll talk with Preston afterwards, and- and just see where he got his numbers from, and try and show him, uh, where the website is that he can put gas.
Go to, ought to get through a little bit.
Right.
So is this just a single cab?
Uh, this is a, uh, quad cab. Uh, the conversation from the guys in the shop is when multiple guys have to go out, whether it's fixing a tile or whatever, they don't like riding in the middle.
Yeah.
And, you know, you're looking at, uh, five, six guys in the shop, or if we've got meetings to go to, it's nice to add that extra- extra row to put guys in.
And you can lock stuff up in the back if you need to.
Exactly. If you've got expensive equipment, you can put it in the backseat and lock it.
Okay.
So we're trading in a regular- We're- we're trading in a regular cab, two thousand and eight, uh, three-quarter ton pickup.
Okay. I'll make a motion for the purchase of the Chevy twenty-five hundred from Humboldt Motor Sales. It'll be forty-four thousand, six twenty-five.
Twelve seconds.
Any other discussion?
Action. Yeah. Actually, twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, so.
Let's state it that way. Make sure this is gonna be added, the rear seat, you don't have people just riding around in it.
Oh, no, no, I mean, that's not the intention.
I know. Make sure it's- Other than that, it's a good deal, I think.
Yes.
I think the Chevy's are good.
I think it's good.
Good pickup, yes.
Okay, any other discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.
Does that come with a bed liner or something there also?
Yes. Uh, the only thing that probably doesn't come, usually the- the lights and the radios are transferred, and then we'll transfer the, uh, uh, truck box.
And you said this was last year's? We were- had it scheduled for last year?
This was scheduled, it's- we should already be using it right now, but I didn't get it in in last fiscal year, so-
Right.
That'll be a carryover. But there's eight weeks of orders, so are we getting this year? Yeah, it'll be sometime in September. Uh, the next three items that I've got are change orders associated with this year's paving. Uh, change order number one, the DOT has a rule that if there is a, uh, overrun on quantities that results in more than fifty thousand dollars, that a change order be issued. Um, on the paving project north of Hardy, we milled three inches, and we got into that bottom lift where there was some road irregularities, so our quantity's overrun, I think six and a half percent, which isn't bad for an overrun, but when you're talking concrete, the dollar value gets up there, and I think the quantity total ended up being sixty-six thousand. In simplistic, very simplistic terms, the milling got a little deeper, it took a little more material to get the surface inside it. With that one, we milled three inches north of Hardy, and what we ended up, we were getting into, most asphalt layers are three inches thick. The one that we were dealing with was three inches for most of it, but then on the outside edge, had, uh, uh, something like three and a half, so we were leaving extra asphalt, and basically to smooth the profile up, we went thicker through some of those spots. Yes.
It added-
It added- This added to the concrete. Yes, yes, so we've got more concrete out there.
Well, that's a very nice rule. Yeah, a little thicker's better than a little thin.
Yes. And that's, wow, don't need to go into details, but you said the DOT got, they mandate the change order, and obviously over. Yeah, we, I mean, we wouldn't have done this if it wasn't for the DOT rule, as far as their fifty thousand dollars. I mean, obviously, you have to pay this, but- Yes.
So on our approved order here, you have change order number one and two. What's the number two then?
Number two is, uh, the change order for smoothness spec. That's both two and three. Um, change order number two is for the, uh, the pavement smoothness specification that's in our contracts. Um, basically, they get- they get an incentive for creating a smooth road.
Right.
So one and two are for the project north of Hardy, and change order number three is the smoothness spec for the road to Bollin- uh, the road from Rutland to Boden, so. You mentioned this, seems like a long time ago, but I believe when the projects were complete, you were waiting. How did they determine the smoothness factor? What they do is they come in with a machine, called a profilometer, and they basically drive the road in both directions, and we hired the DOT to come in and do the same thing to confirm that their numbers are the same as the contractor's. So the contractor can't- Yeah, so the contractor can't fudge numbers and say, you know, we met this smoothness specification, we hire the DOT as an independent contractor. Right. And they did check out real well. Yes, yeah, they matched up. If they didn't meet- We'd follow the DOTs, right? Obviously, they wouldn't be getting this incentive. Exactly. So, that makes sense.
Can we do all three as one, Peggy? One, two, and three, or you want them separate?
They're listed separately, so you can do one and two together.
Perfect. I will make a motion to accept, uh, change order one and two, put them on that, to FM CO forty-six dash fifty-five and forty-six.
I'll second. Any other discussion?
We need more numbers than that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Change order number three.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number three. STDG dash SWAP dash CO four-six parentheses seventy-two.
SFG dash one-six.
How's that? Cause that's going to be smooth. Based on that, driven on them moving- And they are, they are very smooth. And I don't even have my technical indicator, but-
They were doing the coffee cup test, and they were like-
They were.
You never spill the drop. So, and, but-
The only- the only bump is when you go across railroad tracks, north of Hardy, you know, did a little transition, but it's not bad.
No. So.
I'll second. Eric's fine.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. I know we'll get it back in.
Uh, person responsible charge, I believe.
They need your piece number two there.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, so I will talk to my guys, uh, okay, by the end of the week? What you can get? I'll- I'll talk to my foreman, and- and get the lead maps in, and- and get a copy of them to you. Yeah. So even if I can get them to you like by Thursday, and if you've got them to me by Friday, you- Better just keep moving like this, so God doesn't wonder what- That way he's not waiting on us, yeah. Okay. We can do that. Uh, Thursday, we did the first layer of Odyssey on the Sheldon Park Road. Uh, construction went pretty well for us, I think. Contractor rolled it on Thursday. I went out there Friday and rolled it for another hour and a half. They say the- the key is to roll it consecutive days. Um, they'll come in in a couple of weeks and broom it, and then we'll put another lift on. Should be a nice, hard surface road when everything's done. Eventually, it'll be dust free. You need a couple of rains to get the dust off of the rock that's out there.
Ash rock.
Yes. But eventually, it will be a dust-free road, so.
So are we put- there's no limits on weight or anything on that, right?
No, no, there's no- I mean, it's just like a gravel road.
Right.
Um, you know, it- there shouldn't be a weight restriction. I know Cherokee County has done it, and they did it, uh, on a road where it's basically a haul road to an ethanol plant, so they get all kinds of heavy equipment on that road and they did it, uh, on a road where it's basically a haul road to an ethanol plant, so they get all kinds of heavy equipment on that road without any issues.
Oh.
So, and I know. Uh, I believe it's roughly seventy thousand a mile. On this project, we've got cooperation from, uh, the Parks and Rec Department. Um, county conservation was very interested in, in basically eliminating dust because of the amount of extra ground that they've bought for Sheldon, and the amount that they were spending to do dust control every year out there, uh, so they're putting twenty-five thousand towards this project, um, with the county picking up the remainder of it, so.
I asked, I, I, did you say over in southern Indiana or Illinois? Illinois, I think it was, you said they've done all their county roads, or some kind of overlay, and you said they don't have any problems with that. Or anything, or, pardon?
Wow, that'd get expensive.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want it in the whole county.
Yeah. That, that would be, that would be pretty expensive for us, we've got, uh, five hundred and fifty miles of gravel roads.
And I think, if I did hear you correctly, seventy thousand a mile?
Yes.
For this project, per this type of overweightment.
But not only that, I mean, you have to have, uh, you have to have a, a good road to begin with, you have to have a good road base, so, part of the reason that we have so many problems on, uh, drag strip road is it's crap base. I mean, we put that seal code on there back when drag, you know, they had the drag strip going, and the ski lodge there, and basically, that was back at the time when the county was paying for dust control, and they were dust controlling that whole stretch. Well, Paul Flewus back in the day did the math on it and said, you know, it's cheaper for us to put seal code down than it is to continue doing dust control every year. I mean, that's why we get frost boils and pop outs, and, you know, whether it's Sandbin or whoever that's running down that road with a load of hogs, it, it busts up every year, and every year, we end up spending three to five thousand dollars trying to patch it. So, I mean, you've gotta have a good base, which, we watched Sheldon Park for the last two years, and if there was ever gonna be an issue, it would've been this year. We didn't have any frost boils on that road, and we had five hundred frost boils throughout the county.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think this is a good candidate for this road.
So it's seventy thousand a mile, Peggy, where would that put us? In a D. I was looking at your face, I mean. I was gonna wait for you to say, I'm outta here, and leave it. I just watched your face at the seventy thou, it's like, oh my god.
But the paving road is two hundred, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, if you get the chance and drive over west of Pocahontas, the state did Highway Three, they added on to the shoulder, you know, because that road just gets pounded with the rock trucks, but they added on to that shoulder, and now they put the chips, and then they sealed it, and we came back across it yesterday with motorcycles after being over it last week, and it's just unbelievable. And it was big to a frazzle, but it looks.
So they put like a, a leveling lift on it, and then chip sealed it?
Added on to the shoulder, an extra, looks like eighteen inches.
Okay.
And widened that, and then they come across it, sealed all the cracks, and then they put those chips, and put that sealed. Four Dodge asphalt was doing worse.
Okay.
This was on Highway Three?
Three west of Pocahontas, about from, about four, maybe four or five miles west, almost over the Albert City, goes around the curve, and just above the Albert City turnoff there, but it really.
Right.
Yeah, I just done that.
Just in the last week. That's why I was texting you, wanting to know what.
I'll talk to Dan more, 'cause we're supposed to be getting a quote from him for some slurry leveling, basically where we've got depressions, where we've cracked filled it already, where you feel that bump.
Yeah, I just thought if we could, you know, if we could add a five to seven years to a life of, say, one of the block tops that we had pushed down the road, it might be interesting to see what it would cost, just to try to stretch it and save our road a little bit, I don't know. But if you get over that way, take a look at it, it's a.
I will, yeah.
State has to, I mean, I'm sure the state was the one that pushed this, so they must have some issue or interest in what the numbers would've been on it, so. I don't know who you'd talk to with them, or somebody in Pocahontas.
I can check with the, the maintenance crew out of Pocahontas and see.
Okay.
Other than that, like, I'd, I'd send you guys an email, we did have, uh, an accident on Wednesday, I believe, that involved a county vehicle at the intersection of the Rutland Corner. Um, unfortunately, it, it, this instance, it was our fault, it sounds like the, the vehicle was basically in the blind spot of the mirror on the passenger side. And we went through all necessary protocols, drug testing and everything, so.
Have you ever come out?
I have not, um, I know. I know everybody was able to, uh, you know, get into the ambulance right in on their own accord, um, the driver was complaining about her foot hurting, and had a little bit of a airbag burn from the deploying, and, uh, I think one of the kids had a goose egg on their forehead, but, otherwise, knock on wood, I mean, it was, could've been a lot worse.
Yeah.
Well, we preach every day, safety, and I guess that's an example, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right.
Our driver was, was very shook up, yeah, I mean, for the next three hours, he was concerned.
Oh, yeah, he was.
All right.
Thank you, Dan. Okay.
Your, uh. I will, the claims, uh, general, I had two-seven-two, five-six-four, dash-seven-seven, and then, uh, drainage, we had, uh, thirty-eight-nine-four-one, dash-nine-one.
That's what I had also, so I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Both, carry. Now, we'll go into granny.
Well, you're gonna find it, you left him in the.
Yeah, it's fine. You know, you do better and you start overdoing it.
Carpet combing?
Looked to me like you're going backwards.
I, I did, I, it's the, they, they're, they think I twisted some, I was flipping it, and then I flipped it over, and so, you start throwing it, and don't take, you start doing.
Oh.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I agree, when I went back, I.
I'll second it.
He said, uh.
I'll make a motion to go in the green, very good, I'll second it.
There's room.
Well, that's, I'm still, my uncle, he's been gone twenty-four years, so, it has, I think, well, I take that letter to any more.
I knew that was a problem.
Yeah.
But actually, fifty dollars, man.
Oh, really? Yeah.
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
You're back, are ya?
Traps, you stay out of the Japanese vehicles, I don't know if that, you stay out of the Japanese vehicles.
I have now, because they're bad for a little while. They're quite beautiful, they're, they're big.
Pretty small. Slow.
Yeah, true.
Do the history on these things, have you ever seen dollar amounts of these figures in that history?
Yes.
It's kinda interesting, you write the dollar amounts.
And, and lots of times, we do, uh, and I didn't know if we did in this one or not.
I can't see it anywhere.
I find it interesting.
Because I was wondering, I think, the different years, I'm like, I won't, yeah, I was thinking this year.
Because this ditch, this, like, this ditch was probably dug completely for four or five thousand dollars. And now it's common, a hundred and what?
A lot more money, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yep.
The, the ditch of both DDLs, and it was very crap, and I think they taught them that they were fine, and, yeah, and then they're tough guys, and I, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we kept the history real brief on this one.
My map, I'm trying to figure my map. Because not as a spill, because of how the dolage is in, and after takeout.
Everybody ready? BD number ten, preliminary hearing report, here.
I gave you copies of that report, there were some questions early on in this, whether this needed a complete clean-out, so, uh, the report was authorized. Um, we went out, we took elevations, um, we streamlined that process a little, I don't know if Sandy realizes this or not, but we actually used a small flat bottom boat and two four-wheelers, uh, to, to pull the boat along the area, and then we just stopped every so often and get elevations across the ditch, uh, good accuracy and way faster, so it's.
He uses the term "we," but I'm guessing he's been standing in a boat.
Not again, not again. Yeah, my balance isn't easy.
That's the guy that drew the bottom straw, I guess.
Yeah, yes, the only thing is, it's, they don't fight us as much as they're used to getting that preliminary information, because we used to walk the bottom of every ditch, and, uh.
I've been done.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I still remember one up in Casoot County where I was gonna, I had waders on, I was gonna get in, and I checked, and it was over five feet deeper, I was gonna jump in, I'm so glad I didn't jump in, may not be here today. Yeah, um, using our procedure, we check the elevation of the bottom, where it is now compared to what the design was, and that's how we come up with the cubic yards of removal, nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four cubic yards of dirt, uh, removal, silt removal. We've approximated the outlet repairs from what we saw when we were doing the fieldwork, those nearly always increase, there's some that are hidden. If they're not flowing water, sometimes there's grasses over them, you don't see them. Um, we allowed for some exploratory excavation, sometimes that's required to find maybe where a tile comes in, um, or check for other things. Um, total estimated cost, including contingencies, engineering, legal publication, reclassification, interest, just under a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. You probably all remember, you can go up to fifty thousand without bidding, uh, but this is obviously well over that, so. Um, this is the hearing on it, there's a repair, so remonstrance doesn't apply, or landowners can object. Um, the board is basically obligated to do repairs when petitioned for, if the report shows it's necessary. I checked, looked at this last week again, the profile, we didn't have a profile that shows the bottom in the file. There's several places with over two feet of silt, two point four feet is the most I've seen for silt, but, think of that, that's a significant blockage, two point four feet in the bottom of a ditch.
So are those areas in, like, on curb, or on a, I mean?
No, it's pretty well spread out, uh, the north half has the most, I don't know if there's just enough more flow by the time you get halfway through it to help keep it cleaned out.
The upranks are always more silted in.
Yeah, yep, it gets settled out, and then by the time it gets downstream, or. Yeah, yep, so.
Uh, the, the little spur that's on this isn't included on this, is it?
No, no, we figured you should probably do that with the work order we sent.
With the work order while they're there.
Yeah, yep.
Which, uh, spur area, does it even show on this map?
It does. Rick, it's hard to see it.
This one?
That little thing right there, it's not very long, and it's, it's really silted in also.
Yes, I've seen other spurs and other, that's not a clearance.
No.
I have a question, Rick, want that up, and that's not included in this, would it make sense to have the clean-out on this main ditch just illustrated, to have that, those pro cleaned out at the same time?
Yes. Yeah, that, that's, that's kinda how we looked at it from this one.
I didn't know.
Yeah, no, good to ask, good to ask.
But it would make sense, I would.
Absolutely, they won't have mobilization, yeah.
It's not very big, but.
Not very big, they're gonna be there anyway, yeah, so.
There is a, isn't there a little driveway in that spur that has a, um, pipe throat or something?
Don't remember.
Yeah, that's a, that was an old county road.
That's an old county road, that's on our stand.
An abandoned county road now.
Is there a pipe or a box there, or what is it? Yeah, it's a loop in there.
Yeah, that's what it is.
The condition of that's fine. The condition of that, though, you think? It was all right, when they redid it. Okay.
Uh, this is a repair, so the board authorized and set the bid date for the day also, um, I don't know if you. Yeah, I'd sure be glad to try and answer any questions about the report, but then we can proceed to the actual bidding. Any questions on the clean-out?
I'm curious on your siltation depths of the top half versus the bottom half, Rick, which, um, originally, originally Pat and I petitioned for the clean-out, and we were kinda looking at the upper half, basically from two to forty, which would be right west of Judy's, a lake ditch north, because when they put that box in, there was two foot of silt in there at that time, and we know that upper end, Rick, as you said, is, it gets filled in pretty easily. So, that was the original request, when I think we talked about, you were gonna just go downstream and check silt depths.
And there's, there's up to a slit downstream, but, um, they'll dig that very quickly, so we already doing that part is slower. But the upper half, I would say, has nearly all of the two point four, two to two point four feet in it, so. So, you're absolutely right in your observations. Top part's worse.
And, uh, where it goes under this Three Rivers Trail there, there's some blockages there under that trestle too, that'll have to be cleaned.
Yep.
Will this have to be pulled both ways?
We call for that, I believe. If they can prove to us they can cut the far side and not make it vertical, we often approve one side.
You can?
If we will.
You could.
We will, if you want.
Now, does that clean out, does that go down to the top of the creek? That we would consider the creek versus the...
Yes.
Because there are obstructions in that creek. There's trees, and what else, Tom?
There's the, the half bridges that's happened.
Let's follow it.
Is that the one you see in the road? Is that the one you can see from the road that you're talking about?
No.
There's another one up further.
It's on my place. The mist place over in front of my place.
It's a good half to, little over half mile to the south of the glat top.
Yeah.
It's not really easily visible back there, but that, one of the, I just talked to Don about it yesterday, church, but that would be a potential long-term obstruction. And that could be one of the reasons we're getting more siltation up top too, where water flows being obstructed downstream lower end.
We should look at that and do some work order with that probably too.
So is there, is that the only one, or was, did I...
Well, there's a whole bunch of dead trees in there. And there're big cottonwoods that fell in the water. And, uh, it should be, and that bridge is, one half is up and the other half's in the water. And there's a dam there, we thought, every foot of water.
Oh, that's quite a bit. And the board has the right to downstream, even if that's below the Albin, uh, to do, to open that up.
So that's why you're doing that though.
Yeah.
I think Don had, you had previously put in a work order.
No.
No, or you just talked to...
I just talked to Bruce.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, you, you mentioned it.
Not on the creek side of it.
Oh, and that, okay.
Well, that would obviously be an obstruction when it's two forty-eighths.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely. Two forty-eighths or two sixteenths maybe, but, yeah. We'd absolutely look at that drainage area.
So, this creek business obstruction is treated like the clean out of the little spur thing. It's a separate work order. It is not involved in this.
Right.
But I highly recommend it's done at the same time as this project.
Absolutely.
Get rid of the obstructions out of the creek.
Absolutely. Like I say, you have...
Do we have any heavy hassle to do that, being it's a creek? You have to fight the D N R, or anybody else?
Nope, cause we're not really, we're just removing obstructions, um, like a culvert, or trees, or, yeah.
Old bridge.
You're not changing the path, or anything. That's the big thing, is it? Changing the path?
Yeah, path and slope. Yeah.
And as long as you just tear the trees out of it.
We might. Yeah. I did get a call from the...
It's gonna be a huge difference in the cost if you're pulling little suckers out, you know, small trees, as opposed to, like you said, Donnie, a huge cottonwood that...
Yeah, we'll need to look at it with the contractor.
Something that's laying down there, it's gonna be a little bit more, I doubt if somebody would wanna bid it with hundred-foot cottonwood laying in the bottom of it, saying, that's gonna take us five minutes to pull it out of there.
Yeah, we'll look at it with them and be back to you.
Perfect.
Well, in all fairness, when all you can do is remove the obstruction, it isn't as, as an involved project. If you have the right, isn't it?
Oh, no.
I've seen some pretty big trees dug out of creeks. You have a big enough excavator, it ain't that big a deal.
Right.
That's cause you, you aren't going in there modifying the water.
Right, right. Just opening it up. Yep, absolutely.
But the farmer's probably gonna be just a little bit tall if they just swing it out and dump it like we do with the spoils and try to level it, right?
Pretty hard to level off a tree.
I understand that, that's what I'm saying. It's gonna cost something to move the damn thing.
Yeah.
So...
Hopefully it does.
Yeah.
If it's dead, we can burn it, get it, get it going, so...
Yeah, that helps a lot.
But we definitely, when we worked with the department, we'd ask them, how do you make sure this is handled?
Yeah.
But the tree gotta get upstream, one way or another. We worked with the farmers for sure.
How many, how many bridges do we have? It seems like every time you look down a ditch, we got some of these old things dilapidated that are...
Well, there's so many private bridges back when you had the little tiny tractors and stuff. You can go across some things, you know?
There's one Travis just went by, a D D six, and I wouldn't take a Honda Ford with me.
Right.
I mean, that's scary.
Well, those still ours? No one wants to say that?
Right. We tear them out to open it up.
That's what I wanted. Every chance we get, we get rid of it.
There you go. Yep. That's right.
I made a motion to approve the, the preliminary report, accepting the preliminary report.
I'll second it.
Any other additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, carried.
I'm gonna give you one of these. This, this doesn't have, uh, maybe have enough room for the bids now. We haven't gotten very many, but this includes my estimate for the budget. If we truly just have the two bids, is there just two? Uh, this is a sheet, if we have a lot more bids, but... Oh, yes, please.
Is it stuffed in here, or is it just made?
Thank you.
Well, anybody that's over six feet near it, it feels like it's blowing right on you.
County property. So, can you explain this before you open the bid?
Yes.
So you've got the cost estimate sheet and the report, estimate a total district cost, and then the bid tabulation approximation.
Yep, and that's just for the construction.
Yeah.
So if you go down...
Here's the comparison. There's this...
Is that kind of a two to look at?
Yeah. And I try and refine this a little when I give you the bid tab there. They're not gonna match. I'd be shocked if they matched, anyway.
These are extras, that's okay.
Yeah. We always include ten percent contingencies. Every engineering company does that, just for unknowns. Um, engineering, publication, legal.
Well, that's sort of my question.
I, I refine my estimate when I do the bid tab. Yeah. That, sometimes those are done a year ago. You know, this one wasn't so long ago, but, um...
Cause the estimated subtotal construction is more than estimated.
Well, no. Be honest, sometimes I crank down my estimate for the contractors.
Make, make a little change.
Yeah.
Worked over.
Most, most of them are smart enough to pick up on that, actually. But...
It's so cheap, it's unbelievable.
Okay. We just have the two bids. As long as we get a good one, that's all we need. Reutzel Excavating will be the first one I'm gonna open. R E U T C E L. They're out of dirt. Good contractor also. I'll check the bid bond to begin with. We require a bid bond to be submitted or a certified check in a separate envelope. The intent of this is, if it has to be relit for some reason, uh, because of a problem with the contractor, the bond covers that cost. Extremely rare to have to use it. In fact, I don't remember ever using that one. This will be the bid from Reutzel. The bid from Reutzel, who won? Hundred and forty-one thousand ninety dollars. They did the excavation at twelve dollars and fifty cents. I, that feels awfully high.
One forty-one oh ninety?
Yes.
Oh.
Yep. Oh, yeah, sorry, that's the, the total. Yeah, I believe they did that high on the dirt. They must have plenty of work.
Evidently.
Next one's from Peterson Excavating. They've submitted a certified check for their bid security, which is perfectly acceptable. Okay, the total bid from Peterson's is eighty-one thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. Eight one, one four five. And they did the dirt at five dollars a yard, which I think is a good number. Yeah, that's an excellent bid. Well, I'll check the math quick, but, uh, as long as the math checks, we'd recommend you award, and they can work it into their schedule. We can talk about that just briefly, too. They're looking on six now? And they're gonna be moving to eighteen here in a week and a half to two weeks, probably.
So our goal was, is put this out for bid, and still be able to start this, get...
Fall.
Fall?
Summer, fall. Yeah.
Late summer, early fall?
Yes. That's the idea.
Why were you guys doing the difference?
Well, they obviously didn't.
They thought if we get a, get one, see that happens quite often, it's high numbers. You get it, you get it.
Yeah.
It plays really well.
We go rent an action machine if we have to.
Big difference.
Yeah. Math checks on the bid. I'd recommend you award the contract, like I say, so they can schedule the work.
I'll make a motion for Peterson then, for eighty-one thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars.
I'll second that.
Any other additions? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you guys. You, you're gonna come out, okay, and I'm just sure of it. Yeah.
Well, thank you. You did the work, and we're all happy. Anyone got an issue, come talk to us. We'll make it right.
You're gonna go with them, sorry, send somebody with them to check those obstructions for the trees?
Yes, yes.
Bridge?
Yep, absolutely.
They can give me a call right up there, too, cause some...
Oh, okay.
Just give me a call when you're going.
Okay. Yeah.
Beaver's in every county. And every county.
And that's interesting, too, because part of what they're gonna do on eighteen is remove the beaver dam. Really well-built, out of stocks. Beaver Dam is backing all of it.
One of our early, early settlers for, when they get the well-built colonies and...
Yeah. Cause it's, yeah, it's backing up a good two feet of water. Uh, and just for your information, we did get some elevations on eighteen. And the lower three fourths of that doesn't really need much clean out, other than the female repairs. The worst part of it's in the upper fourth or less.
Cause there wasn't too many years ago they cleaned it.
That's right. And we were concerned how that looked, and I think you guys did the work. The bottom is very close to what it's supposed to be.
But an upper fourth?
Yeah, upper fourth or a little less. Has two bridge abutments that do some blockage, the beaver dam does blockage, and more silt.
Rick, what's the current level of water out there? Is it dropped quite a bit? Is it still some flowing through?
It's better. It's getting better daily now, but it's been a hassle. Can't hurt every day, cause if it gets over four or five feet, and everything you're doing's underneath, you can't shake the side.
Yeah.
And I'm kinda gonna do that right the first time. Once you cut it out, you can't put it back.
Yeah.
No, it, water's getting better. Hopefully we're done with D D six in July. I'm hoping that I'm done with D D eighteen in August. First of September, we're on ten. But the trees up at the bottom, if I could maybe leave them till later, or I could even...
Oh, yeah.
The ground's frozen.
Cause that'd probably be a better time to do it.
Yeah, it would be.
Farmer's crops are out, you know, we wanna fire.
Yeah, when you, when you don't do any damage to the pasture there.
Just a, just a thought, I'll do it however you guys want it.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
Get this cleaned out, get flowed, and then worry about them trees later on.
Yeah.
I stopped down, seen Travis, I thought, would you go as a night, look a nice, nice job on six.
He's pretty, he's pretty handy in that. Appreciate it, guys. We wanna, we wanna look good, we're in the county, and I'm getting assessed on these two ditches too.
That's right, you wanna do it right.
So, I'm glad, glad we won this.
Can I ask a question about that culvert on Roosevelt? That was put in several years ago? And it's sitting at an angle? I mean, it's almost like a dam on the, on the side. I think there's two feet difference?
Not that much, no.
How much is there?
We, we looked at it shortly after it was put in, and had a report on it. Looks like, let's say, six tenths, one end to the other.
Like, really, what on that?
I know. But we, we didn't get down to the bottom of the inlet, it's the first time we went down there this year. But then we went back and were able to, and we did confirm the back slope, but it is all below the bottom grade of the ditch. And it sized adequately, we went through a size calculation. You hate to have that fall on anything. I mean, it just...
But it did lose a little bit of capacity.
Yes. Yes. But the capacity's there.
But it's still on that side.
I, I put a laser on it, and that's where the two feet's coming.
Okay.
There's probably a foot and a half of silt in that pipe right now.
Yes.
Now, if we can get a little track skid loader in there and shove it out and clean it out, but...
That'd be the goal.
It sure seems like on D D six, what we cleaned, the order just is not getting away very good. But the rest of D D six on the west side of Roosevelt probably needs it in the near future.
Yes.
But that pipe has a lot of dirt. Couldn't get my stick to the steel. I shoved it in as far as I could, and it went a foot and a half.
So how big is the pipe?
Ten foot, ten foot diameter.
Wow.
Yeah. It's a big one, that's the saving grace. Is it's big enough that even with it buried in the back slope, what's left calculates that it's acceptable. I didn't remember us doing a report on it till it was brought up again this spring. But I look back, we had a project assigned to it, to, and that was shortly after it was installed.
Just as a farmer out there, you drive that road, you look up both sides, it seems like...
Seems like the east side is always higher.
And, and maybe it's just, you know, say you put six inches in the ditch, and then it feeds, so it whitens out so much more, but it's always deeper on that side of the ridge.
Yeah. I'm hoping, no, I'm hoping you can get in there with a steel loader.
That contractor was from, was a Chioclo, they down there in southeast Iowa. And they didn't have the equipment, the right equipment, the big enough equipment. When they rolled that pipe in, that ditch, they never could move that thing again. And they ended up filling it in where it landed.
I believe it.
Part of the issue.
Yeah, I believe it. And that's why secondary roads had us run calculations on it. Confirm flow lines, run calculations on capacity.
So how long has it been from that point to where we're at now? If we got a foot and a half of dirt in it, has it been five years? Has it been ten years? Has it been twenty?
Fifteen, twenty years ago?
That's not that long.
That's not true. Both them, most of them, seven or eight, maybe.
Yeah, it's more than seven.
Is that...
It was done before I got on.
Or maybe it's been ten then.
So I guess my question is, in ten years, if it's put a foot and a half in it, in another ten years, we have three feet?
I wouldn't think so. And I think the, Rick hit on a spot, clean out below that, below Roosevelt would help as much as anything. And I think that should be in the plans now.
Well, we don't, if it's that big a pipe, we don't wanna... Well, we don't, if it's that big a pipe, we don't wanna try it in ten years to figure out how we're gonna fix a ten-foot pipe?
No, no. That's where.
But no, and just we left it lay where it was at?
And now downstream is the answer. And that should help maintain less silting.
Yeah, 'cause then when you get a good rain, it should flush it out.
Yep.
We seem to get them.
I was gonna say, I think that they put that pipe, and there's no water levels, never got low enough, you could actually see the difference.
Put a snorkel on your skid steer before you throw it in.
Well, I think you guys have done that with a skid steer. You rented.
You just get the walk behind one.
Yeah.
Hook a chain on it, drop it down in there.
Cause I wanna walk.
Yeah.
We did one over by Runway.
Wow.
Concrete one, under Highway seventeen.
Yeah, they rented a walk behind skid loader. Nice. Yeah.
That was just like this, that's put in half the dirt, and you just, you go all the way through the top, press the bucket, the stick, and.
Yeah, it takes a while.
Takes a little bit, but.
Wow.
Yeah, it's always interesting.
Are you proposing to get the silt out of this?
Well, it might be just like Rick said, you clean the bottom side, the other might flush it out.
Push it, yeah.
It's kinda packed in there, and, and around too corrugated, you know, with the ripples, the skid loader, and.
Right.
You did it all, yeah.
That would be the first thing you wanna do anyway. Then you can shove it, clean it out by itself, or get the stuff, and get that out.
Yeah.
It's worth a trip out there to see the east side where they cleaned, and then look at the west side. It's amazing. It's just a little path on the west side. So you can see where the flow's getting.
That's where we need to go downstream some.
Yeah.
That has been brought up, and it just needs to be followed through on, whether it's a petition or investigation.
For a record. Okay. So wait.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yes, good weather.
Tell me where those beavers are. Did you tear that beaver dam out yet, in DD eighteen?
We haven't, yeah.
You haven't? But is that what you alluded to?
Yes.
In eighteen?
Yes.
Well, you can tear the dam out, but if you don't tear the beavers out along with it, they're gonna build it back by the time you get upstream.
Oh, yeah.
That's what they live for.
So.
That's the upper end.
It's near the upper end.
Actually, I have been noted, but, again, the beaver trapping people have been having great issues with the water levels, too.
Oh, sure. Yeah, that makes sense.
So, but when you get to that, let me know.
Very good.
Because otherwise, you could tear that dam out, but you're gonna, you're gonna turn around and go back and tear it out before you're done, and you can just get it.
You have somebody you used, evidently, right?
Yeah. And so hopefully, you know, you get closer to that, even before you tear it out.
It'd be nicer before.
I actually have that location, that beaver dam, but, but again, the water levels are really lost up there trapping.
Yes.
Can't trap beavers when the water's just flooded. So, anyway, just keep that in mind, if we haven't done something prior to it.
You have.
Yeah, I did. I did.
About everybody.
Monster.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've done good.
Need that once in a while. Okay, this, after the initial hearing, we were directed to look at areas that flooded regularly. And there was, uh, we made an official adjustment to, to, I think it's Davis' properties, um, that were tiled west away from Sub Five. Now, that area was in the watershed originally. We left it in the watershed. Um, we reduced, Brent and Pat were the commissioners on this. We reduced the Davis property fifty percent, which is our typical adjustment if they have tiled the sub-circus away. They still have the right to connect in the logical place to connect with the branch six of Sub Five, 'cause it points that direction from the main tile. Um, but we, we need to set a new hearing. Just felt it would be cleaner to go ahead and make these revisions, rather than continue and not know when we'd get the revisions done, and all of that. Um, I think the proper thing to do is set a new hearing date. Trish looked at dates. Six weeks from now, to get thirty-two days, you need at least forty, is Labor Day. So I'm sure you won't meet, I assume you won't meet Labor Day.
I doubt it.
Yeah. So she looked at September ninth, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So she'll do a notice, and people then can submit objections, um, to be evaluated. Typically, it's required by the time of the, the hearing on the reclassification report, so. We spread one, oh, I was gonna give you a copy of that.
I mean, we do have to accept it.
Yeah, accept and set a hearing date. Yep.
And that's just for the reclassification, correct?
Yes, correct.
A lot of nines, nine-nine of nineteen.
Yeah.
Nice.
That should be lucky, shouldn't it? This is one September. Yep. Relatively expensive project, because there aren't that many acres. Um, when the sheet that's used to spread the cost is only two pages long, you know it's not a big one. Yeah. Now, I'd, I'd love to hear a confession on how much good it's done out there. Um, I feel like it has to have done a lot of good, if things have dried up. I know Steve Hunter Mart is commented on it. Um, some of that we won't see till the harvest, probably. Hopefully, any of the drought outs are smaller, less effect. Yeah. Spread one point one million dollars. I did not talk to Trish as far as what the total might end up. That was my, yeah, my approximation, um, for the whole thing. This is the one where you bill like fifty percent or a little more to try and keep the interest down. So you have to decide how you're gonna handle that. If you use the, we reclass when it's approved, and adjust. Like, if, if they paid ten thousand, and they owe sixteen, do you bill them six? Or do you, or do you, I mean, that's how I think, yeah, you'll adjust them all. If there's anybody that's overpaid, you'll have to take care of that, too, at the time, but.
And this may not include the whole cost that the district has incurred?
Right.
Because of other, um, payouts, and Russian recontrol, and some other repairs.
Other bills that are unrelated to the project.
Right.
Did anybody take advantage of, didn't we give them the opportunity to put another tee on them? I thought we.
Yes, yes, yes.
Some of them did. So that wouldn't go on there, on this, right? That would be private?
No, the tees were added, that's part of the main.
Yeah, yeah, the tees itself.
I didn't know if there was, if they wanted like the second one, more than what?
Oh.
I, I thought that was thrown in there, if they wanted an additional one?
We tried to accommodate them with the tee itself.
All right.
The tees are part of the project.
Yes. We want that done right.
No, that's what I was hoping, that when we do it that way, but I didn't know if that was added on to the total, or if that was a bill to me, if I wanted it on my.
No, it's added to the total.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just the connector.
Yeah, yes.
That would, that way not using saws to hold it.
Right, it was a manufactured.
Right.
Connection.
Yes, yes, they were able to get manufactured tees.
Didn't remember that, I'd ask.
I think you summed up that, I don't know, everyone in this district has paid last year, last levy. Like Rick said, this is an adjustment, would be refilled backwards.
Remembering your, um, waiver payments here.
Right.
So I'll figure that, subtract out the interest and.
Well, you have, so if we're talking September ninth, I have the hearing for the objections, and there will be.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you have the numbers by when, or what was paid and what is owed? That's the question.
Sure.
Supposed to mention that, uh, the Davis property is strongly disputing this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I've had to call from, I don't know, is it executor, or how is, what is title it?
Some would executive.
Even into this new one, or the.
There's objection from previous, there's the objection to this, obviously, and was understandable. This is a protocol, we have to accept this report, we have to set the hearing.
Yep.
Between now and hearing date, objections can be filed.
Yes, correct.
We told him to make sure that he does his part, right? When he was here and objected, that.
He had to wait till it.
Had to wait till this was done.
Well, he's understandable to this point.
Right.
Obviously, between now and the hearing date, that's like a September ninth, sounds good.
Mm-hmm.
Then you have that time to file objections. Is that, that's why this protocol's in place.
There you go.
And I'm just stating that there is gonna be objections.
Yeah.
You ironed out.
Well, I'm not sure what they said to you, but the statement to me was if it didn't go to zero, they were gonna fight it.
Yep. Uh, prelude it in so many words, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so be it. Uh, if it, this may be our first one to go to the district court, if it is.
It is. Carmen?
Yeah, I guess, just to understand, um, Davises are objecting, they're, uh, three assessments of down bottom of page one, uh, two thousand six, and nineteen thousand, and.
Yes.
I'll rate them.
You gotta rate them, yeah.
Yeah, he came out with five dollars, so it's rating them, yeah. Oh, I know. And this is kinda what we've done on previous reclassifications. If somebody tiles another direction.
We got a reduction.
We got a reduction.
So, just to look at this report, and the numbers on it, is it, would you consider this, are these totals? This doesn't take into effect what we just talked about, that.
Right.
Like Trish said, some monies have been paid previous.
Yes, yes.
Since we allow. Previous payment.
Yes.
This is just the total number.
Yeah, this is the total.
This is not, doesn't affect who paid what earlier.
Nope, not at all. So there'll be, like, I think the Davis paid twenty-some thousand so far. So, yeah, we'll see how this one comes out. I think it might be actually, could be even less than they've paid. We'll have to see, but, no, this is, this is our intent at the total project cost. Doesn't include some of the other costs that Trish was talking about.
No, it doesn't include that, and it doesn't take into effect, this is total project costs reclassified.
Yep.
And doesn't account for what anyone's paid previously, and/or additional projects in the district.
Correct, correct.
The clean outs, the brush controls, or the repairs, so.
Yep. Now, this is all on the computer, of course, so if Trish comes up with a number for a total, new total, if it's one point two-five, or whatever, million instead of one point one, put in one number, and it redoes the sheet.
But all that's doing is accounting for the additional non-project cost.
Right, right, yeah.
Let's hope it doesn't go that high.
Yeah.
I mean.
Oh, I hope so, too.
With as few, and people were in this thing, one point two is a lot of.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, yeah. And I don't have a handle on the other things that have been done at all.
But Trish's point is that those things will be added on to the next levy.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'd make a motion to accept the reclass for the DD eleven five?
I'll second Trish's motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also add, put nine-nine nineteen for the hearing, if that works for you, nine-nine-nine.
Nine-thirty?
Nine, well.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'm just gonna go on a lemon and tell you that I'm stopping that morning and buy a lottery ticket on. You put that many nines in one area, there's gotta be, and I'm gonna put nine on those tickets.
Yeah.
Don't put that in there, my pastor will probably yell at me.
Nine, nineteen, twenty-nine, thirty-nine, forty-nine. There's your numbers.
Yeah, there you are.
Okay, if this is gonna be set for hearing September ninth, then it won't, when will the assessment be issued? This fall?
No.
It won't make it this fall? It'll be March, come with the March payment?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're, so you're gonna go back and figure interest from the first assessment on this money? That's still outstanding?
Well.
At six percent?
I, I could be okay to levy, but I cannot.
Yeah, I, oh, and that's what I'm asking. I mean, I'm not being critical, I mean, I'm just trying to understand this, because, yeah.
I mean, otherwise, I wouldn't have a problem doing levies, but in other times. But I don't think we're legally able to do special ones at different times of the year, other than.
Yeah.
Wish we could.
I wish you could, too.
Yeah.
Because the project's done, um.
The meter's still running.
Yeah, and I can't stop it.
Yeah, that's the bad.
And I'm looking at another hundred and seventeen thousand with these fingers.
Yeah.
At six percent.
I really think you can levy this one later. It's just gonna have to be a separate mailing that goes out, other than along with the taxes. You know? 'Cause that's talked to their, you know, I said that IDD eight thing, and the federal counties do it a little differently. So, let's, let's check into it and see if we can maybe get it out.
I appreciate that, the opportunity.
It would help.
It's a lot of money.
We're getting obviously over six thousand dollars, some that I was looking at.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing, too, even, yeah, that's definitely a good point. There's nothing that says you cannot make a payment, you don't have the exact dollar figure.
But there's.
The pressure's often.
They won't let you, because it's not safe to receive it.
Uh, without the levy, without.
It makes sense, but you just can't do it without the levy.
Yeah.
But I think.
Yeah.
But you can levy at a different time, as you like.
I mean, it, it might be a month late, but maybe we can get it out.
Seven to six months.
Six months.
Yeah, exactly. I believe it gives you the option.
I think so.
I think we should look into it.
And see if, you know, like, this project's gonna, like, explain to him, and see if he's a month late, or just have a separate mailing.
Because it would want to be for this district.
Yes.
One district, basically.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep.
And it's not a huge, it's not a huge.
I think it's fair to everybody, not just.
I think it's fair to everybody. I guess, I mean, my portion of the project is already nine thousand more than I expected.
Which already would want it done.
Originally predicted, and I understand that, but.
Yeah. Also, I get it in another tax year.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yes.
Well, Trish, if you get, if you find something out, just either send us an email or something that you talked to so-and-so, and there's an opportunity or ability, would be awesome.
'Cause from what I understand, yeah, ask, ask them.
If you don't.
Ask, right, ask, what's his name?
Do we get our hearing officially set?
Nine-nine of nineteen at nine?
I seconded it.
Any other instructions?
And it's straight at nine?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe nine oh nine?
Nine.
Perfect.
I like that.
Aye.
All right.
While we're in this, Carmen's correspondent, do you mind if I say this? Because I did a little checking, for, we kept missing each other.
Yeah.
Apologize. But I know you're busy, you're busy, and I was gone.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you got my message, Matt.
I did.
So it was a rough, these ten days to correspond.
Yeah. I wanted to talk to you after the meeting, I mean.
You can, I mean, but I don't have any, I couldn't, I have no additional information on your question. I mean, that, we can sure talk, and I'm more than happy to, because I was trying to get in touch with you.
Okay, yeah, I know you did.
Opportune time, uh, obviously, checking with Rick and checking around, uh, I don't.
Yeah, I guess I just kind of walk out there, and Helen's, to the north, got a short driveway. I didn't, then, the longer. I didn't, then, the longer, good Burton Hall Road, uh, was utilized, and it's kind of like, I'm not sure where or by whom that decision was made, and it certainly wasn't discussed in a, you know, prior to doing it, uh, with me. And I guess I'm kind of like, how, you know, how does the contractor deviate from, you know, extended plans? And maybe not right there at the bridge, maybe it wouldn't have worked, but that's, you decide that bridge, it's pretty shallow ditch. You know, and I haven't had a tape measure and gone out and figured out the temporary and permanent easement, but it sure has, has to have been closer than the top of the hill.
And I, I called Carmen and confessed, I didn't know until last week, our Jordan was in on the discussion to use that driveway.
Okay.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I mean, I followed that when I got your-
Definitely shared that with me, I guess, I'm just kind of like, astounded at the cannibalness of, I don't know, in, in my terms, violating easements, and, and the, you know, the, the project in bid and, kind of, you know, I feel like I'm left with a mess, practically, and, so.
And what we should have done was get Carmen herself personally, because-
We've determined that that kind of-
Yeah, yeah. And I didn't realize till last week that we were in on those discussions in the field. I apologize for that, um, so, um, yeah, I mean, similar things have been done on many projects, but the, getting the information to the proper person was, was where the ball was dropped.
And I guess going forward, this is must be constructive, uh, maybe give the contractor a list of who the owners are, and, you know, have the contractor be in touch, or-
Yes, the phone numbers and owners and phone numbers.
Phone numbers, emails, cell phone numbers, I mean, we're all carrying stuff around in our pockets anymore. Uh, but at least having a discussion, you know, preempting the decision, uh, and, you know, trying to figure out who's in charge or who's authorized. And certainly, it's a landlord option to authorize a tenant, and I, I know sometimes that occurs. Uh, but I, you know, I guess I'm really reacting to the simple assumption that the tenant can be authorized.
Yeah, that he was, Jordan says he was in on the discussions too, but that shouldn't have stopped there, it should have.
So-
And we do, part of the reasoning here too, we, we put every landowner's name right on the plans. We don't have a phone number, we're more than willing to get it, yeah. Most, a lot of kind of-
Do you have any numbers for everybody, phone numbers for all the landowners? I was wondering if we can have that as a-
Obviously, because we get the-
No, I was just curious, I was just curious if that we even have that access, you know, the phone numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, not necessarily, but address, yeah.
But maybe with the mailing, I mean, you do enough mailing to say, you know, please provide us-
Please send us the information, so we can attach it to the contractor.
Yeah, and obviously, if they don't, then-
Yeah, then they don't, then they have the opportunity.
Yeah.
The, the best contractors, I don't know if that's not the right terminology, get familiar with all the landowners. I mean, so if there's something wrong, they, they hear it, um, yeah. We, I know a lot of cases where they're on a first-name basis with the landowners, because it, that relationship is good, they can-
Especially, if you have a local contractor, especially, if you have a land that's long ways away.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it's an absentee landlord.
Or an absentee landlord.
Right, so, we're gonna use a constructive criticism-
That's, and that's the way it's-
Not, just, you know, because there could be other instances.
Well, as, you know, and not to go off on a tangent, but, you know, at this point in time, this is inherited property, you know, and, you know, I don't know that Oliver, you know, moved back here, my brother definitely won't, but, you know, I guess as, as drainage commission, I think you need to, uh, recognize that property changes hands, and you've got owners that are absent, and, uh, I mean, the Davis property, Gene Davis lives in Arizona. You know, I know Madeline's children, I think one of them certainly is on one of the pillows or something.
And then, then the contractor can talk to the owner, and the owner can say, yes, give, give, I give my tenant permission to make the decisions for us.
Yeah, or tell me more about it, or, you know, um, maybe I can be up there tomorrow, or, you know, I mean, those kinds of things to not get into this kind of situation.
Yes.
Like I say, after everybody, they learn something.
Yeah.
Those are unrelated to this, so we've learned.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And you, you know, learn from your mistakes, and those of others, and just implement it moving forward, hopefully, you improve.
And try to do a better job every time.
And we've got some other things, like I say, unrelated to any of the property owner concerns, that we'd certainly not like to have happen again.
Right.
On a periodic review.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I refer back to DD two lateral, Lois Piper, where we changed what we were doing, but we worked with the landowner, um, to make it happen.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a big deal to do it if you do it at the time.
Right.
Oh, and that reminds me, just so I don't forget, um, Mansky's moving in on DD two lateral, um, Trish's dad's project out there, um, that Mansky's doing to close Agwell.
Oh.
He's got a lot of pipe on hand already, I look for him to be in there-
I almost forgot about that.
Yeah, I know, it's just been quiet.
Yeah, it has been.
He's gonna get in, gonna get in, now he is, he's got a lot of material out there already.
Because obviously, the weather was, again, not conducive, not, I, last week, excuse me, but-
Yep.
The climate, you, it was just too wet last week.
Yeah, yeah, yep. We staked it, we did some restaking, because we raised the very bottom end and decreased the slope a little bit to help us-
Because of the rock.
Be sure we missed the rock. Yeah, we think we're okay, but we calculated it, and it was, what he asked for in the assessment was acceptable. We staked it, we did some inspection, um-
Very near future.
'Cause that's a private deal?
Yeah.
And doesn't involve the district?
Correct, yeah.
And on the flip side there, I've been contacted by the tenant, not the landowner, and they're wondering, when are they gonna get this done, I've got holes out in my field that I'm farming, it's not, the landowner is fine there, everybody knows what's going on, tenant says, you know, what the heck, you know, this was gonna be done last year.
Yeah, yeah, we all did.
And so, I relayed back to him just what Rick said, it's, well, if it would have been not rained two inches or more last week, I'm thinking he'd probably be out there.
Yeah, I believe so.
So, yeah, it's just-
We'll do enough inspection, inspection, be comfortable with the work, Mike Wallen asked us to do that, because it is state money involved.
Right, but you, everything is all due to him.
Yes, yes. In a, it's, it's side note-
Plastic, yeah?
Yes, yeah, plastic with rock. He uses a company, I can't remember the name now, it's not one from right here, but uses hundred percent virgin material, because Mansky was telling me how he'd-
Precision or?
Precision is the, his company, but it's- Um, maybe it does, but someone told me they're opening a plant, either in Humboldt or Algonah. Okay.
I think it's-
Yeah.
That company.
That company.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what the name of it is either.
I got it written somewhere, but, yeah.
Yes, I just heard that through the grapevine, but that, whatever the name of the company is, is opening a plant now.
Oh, good. So, that's- Be a good, a good source.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Save someone close.
Yep, yep.
That might, in all of our drainage issues, be positive, I think.
Mm-hmm. Have a petition.
No.
Well, we have two of them local.
Are we o- open for other stuff?
I think so, I think we're done with official stuff.
Carmen, I use that, I mean, I, I, that's, there you go, that's even something new that I couldn't, didn't know.
Yeah.
And we went through the damage thing to the parts district-wise for Carmen.
Yes, yep. You authorized the payment.
And I, you know what, I appreciate you bringing up that learning constructive criticism concern, because, you know, there's no sense in having it happen someplace else again.
Uh, no, I don't wish list on anybody.
No, no.
You know, Erickson called me this morning, the pipe that Jordan marked-
Mm-hmm.
Still haven't, we, he just wants to make sure it's almost August 1st, which September will follow. There's like twenty pipe out there that have been chipped, broken, cracked, or whatever. Um, make sure King has those ordered, so that when they do get the green flag, uh, we aren't sitting there saying, we're twenty pipe short, because he said, I'm really gonna be on the edge of my seat for, um, getting this thing done. But Jordan marked all those pipe, and he said, just wanna keep it on the front burner to make sure that, whatever the number was, he said, I think it was around twenty. I said, I would bring it up, so.
Excellent, yes.
I stopped out there after that last inch rain, it looked like what Jensen did was really looking nice.
Good.
Really looked good.
Something he did particularly.
Put that new intake in out in the field and put a berm up along the road and-
Yeah, the road really looks like it's holding its own, but he put a, put a riser off the in, or the main, brought it up and he buried it in a monsoon the next morning, and I thought it would, turned out really nice. Jet said, just let it settle, because he said he's still got a lot of dirt that, uh, probably gonna end up having to put back down around there, but-
Is that one that was washed down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
That looks good now.
Good.
But dial this one to make sure that-
This one, Jordan-
Said he checked the pipe, and there's, he thought, he couldn't remember, he said he, I'm sure he would have the number, but he said it seemed to him it was twenty, or marked out there.
Yeah, 'cause all of a sudden, September will be there.
Yeah.
It's a lot of them still there.
I can't believe it. Crazy.
So, I done my, I did it for you, I spat myself on that.
Yeah, yeah, we agree.
I, it's all I had written down.
And you're gonna check on that, those trees out there with-
Yes, yeah.
That bridge, you know?
And the spur, yes. Yep, yep.
Perfect, sounds good.
Yeah, we'll check all that stuff on, ten.
Forgot about our lot.
I know, Yevlin's tiled into that spur, I mean, I, they, they're wanting to clean the whole spur.
Mm-hmm.
I says, no, we just don't move to clean stuff without four quarters or whatever, he said, I gave him permission to clean fifty feet, or they're dumping their tile in.
Just so I could find the correct bottom. Yep, he told me, or he asked me about grade, and I said, just find your hard bottom and stay above it, one to two feet, and you'll be fine. So, good.
We out? You done, have you done? I'll make a motion to let it drainage.
Okay.
Thank you.
All very kind.
Aye.
Oh, very perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Get the one right before he's on his trip.
He's happy with that, during District Ten, for prom report.
Yeah. Certainly, yes. Ask anytime.
So, if you said, uh, what you had estimated, like, huh?
Hundred and seventeen? Hundred and seventeen?
For the actual contractor, the team in the eighty one.
No, they're, we could look at it as just the construction.
Because he's past eighty one, so he's kinda right on something.
I think that's one of that, yeah.
Thanks, Carmen.
Yeah.
Unusual, you got a good project even right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you, you look like you probably would.
Man, the little, what he said, he doesn't look at our speed.
Yeah.
That's fair. Moving that close, though. Now, if you go and find out, hey, it's gonna cost X amount extra for the, removing the trees, etc., they're taking, and that'll be-
Correct, if you-
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
There's good down the road. We're there. We're pretty good there. We know what the contractors did on it. And his is Phil Peterson with a S, isn't it? Is he P E D E R S or what? And then he also, same same spelling, exactly, okay, I guess. He doesn't have R, is it? No, it looks like it at all in this one, doesn't it?
I think it's an O.
Probably has some official document. Phil Peterson was knowing that much as a suspect.
Yeah.
The town for Park. Yeah, exactly. I, I had to look every time, just be sure it's not a lake.
Right.
You bet.
You're welcome. This is why, that's why we're sure that that happens, but I think you're true. Again, it's-
Green Berets. I mean, the Berets are gonna be ready.
Well, if you get in line, then probably, yeah, other landowners, maybe for a year, unless, um, they might force you to pay. I'm not supposed to call us, I'm not even supposed to. And, and I guess it's like, and they do their effects, you know, the termites, and the compaction, every year, and, you know, it's, you know, like, there are additional costs, you know, and part of my, and then the general keeps both touching, what's the question? Roy, whatever, yeah, it's like, they can come and, yeah, and, and, yeah, Roy, I should probably, yeah, and if I'm going to, he comes for us, but he started-